Recording in progress.
Well, good evening, everyone. I will call the Federal Way City Council meeting for March 1st of 2022 to order. And would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And actually, as we do, Judge Larson, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. We've got a couple of very important things to do this evening, and then we'll have a reception, and then we'll get on to the other business of the evening. The first is we have a -- oh, actually, before we go any further, Councilmember Tran is appearing electronically in the magic world of today's technology. Councilmember Tran, how are you?
Hello, Mayor. Hello, everybody.
All right. And thank you. So let's move on to the ceremonial swearing-in of Judge Bales by Judge Dave Larson.
Mayor, I believe there was a motion to amend the agenda.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Before we do that, Council President Cochamart, do you have a motion to amend the agenda?
Thank you. Mayor, I would like to move to amend the agenda to add item --
My, please.
I would like to amend the agenda to add item 6G to Council Business Designating Ravine, Ukraine as a sister city. Is there a second?
Second. Been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we'll add that to the agenda. Now, moving on to the ceremonial swearing-in of Judge Brad Bales by Judge Dave Larson. You raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Brad Bales.
Aye, Brad Bales.
You solemnly swear or affirm
You solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Washington
and the Constitution of the State of Washington
and I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge
the duties of the Office of Judge
the duties of Office of Judge
of the Municipal Court for the City of Federal Way
of the Municipal Court of the City of Federal Way
King County, Washington
King County, Washington
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Your Honor?
Thank you. I'll keep this super brief. I just wanted to thank all my friends and family that came tonight. I'd also like to thank the committee that was put together, the seven members that took their time to review all the files in the case, to interview all the individuals, and then make a selection, and also, finally, the Mayor and the City Council for having trust in me to take over this position. And I hope to use my years of experience as a prosecutor, a defense counsel, military judge, and international operational law officer in the military to hopefully get trust in our system, try to make our system as smooth as possible, and something that our community will be proud of. And again, I'd like to thank everybody that attended, and especially my wife, who's here with me and has supported me all the way through this process, including when I was a military judge and having to travel to different states to try cases and would be away from home for a while, and again, through this selection process and everything. So again, I appreciate her, and then my mother-in-law's here, too. Where is she at? Susan, she's in the back, and Asher, and then I have two more that are taking advantage of technology that are on Zoom as well. So again, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, and I hope to talk to everybody during the break. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, congratulations, Your Honor, and thank you for your service to our community, and we wish you all the best. Okay, now we move to the recognition of South King Fire and Rescue Chief Pennington. Chief, come on up. Actually, Chief, I've got a little something for you, and then we just wanted to make sure that, you know, we know that transitions in life occur and in careers, but with the 40 years of dedicated, 40-plus years of dedicated service to our community, we were not going to let a little thing like the pandemic and all that get in the way of our time to be able to say, as a city, thank you so much for your service to our community. I've got a certificate of recognition, and I want to read that and hand it to you and give you an opportunity. But I know that not only were you in the fire service, but your service at the Des Moines City Council and your deputy mayor post, and everything you've done, including being a great friend and partner to the City of Federal Way. So let me go ahead and read this. Certificate of recognition from the City of Federal Way presented to Chief Vic Pennington. On behalf of the elected officials and residents of the City of Federal Way, in recognition of your dedicated service to the people of South King County as Fire Chief of South King Fire and Rescue and more than 44 years of public service protecting lives and property, dated this first day of March 2022 by myself, the Mayor, and the seven council members. Thank you, sir.
Well, I found a speech up here. I could use this one. Mayor, Council President, Deputy Mayor, and council members, thank you so much for taking the time out to recognize my service. That means a great deal. The partnerships that we have, that South King has with the City of Federal Way is tremendous. A great partnership, a great partnership with our electeds, and that really came to light during this last two years. You know, I remember standing here in March of 20, and we talked about the pandemic and where we were going to go and how we were going to manage it, and two years later, you know, we're at the, you know, hopefully at the tail end of it. But those, the successes are because of the partnerships and the relationships that we've forged over the years through our emergency management, through our work together. So it's an honor to have been the steward of the Fire Chief's position, serving the citizens of Federal Way and the entire South King Fire and Rescue, and to have this and be recognized is a tremendous honor, and I will cherish this, and thank you all so much.
Thank you, Vic. Counsel, let's go take a picture with Chief. That'll take us a few seconds to mosey on down there. All right. Well, thank you, Vic. Thank you, Chief, and congratulations, Your Honor. All right, next proclamation. March Women's History Month, celebrating women in politics. We've got several council members.
So Deputy Mayor Honda?
Oh, yes, I was going to say a few things. So March is Women's History Month, and we're celebrating that along with Women in Public Office Day, which is March 19th. And Federal Way has been very, very fortunate. Actually, the 30th district in South King County in a number of elected women that we have and women in roles that help our area very much. So I would like to invite the following people up. I would like to say that the school board is in a study session now, and we have three school board members who are women. Director Trudy Davis, who's the vice president of the board, Director Lakeisha Phillips, and Director Dr. Jennifer Jones. I was hoping that Director Phillips would be able to break away, but she's, I don't see her here. We have State Senator Claire Wilson, who is, I believe, on Zoom. State Representative Jameela Taylor. Lake Haven Commissioner Laura Belvin, if you could come up. Commissioner Belvin was appointed to the commission, I think, last year or the year before, and was two years ago, and was recently elected. She is only the second woman to serve on that board. And the first woman ever elected to the South King Fire Board is Fire Commissioner Caroline Vodino, and she is on Zoom. We also have CEO and President of the Greater Federal Way Chamber of Congress, Rebecca Martin, if she could come up. And Dr. Dani Pfeifer, our school superintendent, was invited, and she is still at the study session. They had hoped that they might be done so that they could get here, but they're not here yet. So we're going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and then we'll come down and take some pictures, and we'll let you speak. All right, so go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So this proclamation is celebrating Women in Public Office Day, providing healing, promoting hope. Whereas the month of March is Women's History Month and celebrates the significant contributions women of all races, ethnicities, and backgrounds have made to the world, whereas women play a critical role in the vitality and diversity of our communities and are essential to ensuring Federal Way is well represented.
Whereas while the 20th century was a pivotal time of growth for women entering politics, women remain underrepresented in male-dominated fields, and thus, providing opportunities to support women in public office is imperative.
Whereas recognizing women in public office will bring awareness to the fundamental necessity of their work and will inspire other young people to serve their communities.
Whereas we recognize the many ways in which women have provided healing and hope to humanity for countless generations, and now therefore, we, the undersigned Mayor and City Council of the City of Federal Way, to hereby proclaim March 19th to be celebrating Women in Public Office Day, and we call upon the people of Federal Way to unite as we support the successes of women in public office. Signed this first day of March 2022 by our Mayor and council members.
So we're all going to go down and take a picture.
Sure. Does anybody want to say anything?
We're going to go down, and they're going to say something with their
All of us going down?
Do you guys want to say something first? Yeah, do you want to say something first?
Oh, wait, say something.
It's been a privilege to serve the people of Federal Way as a Lake Haven Water Commissioner, and we don't get to this position on our own. I want to thank the chamber for hosting the advancing leadership class, the City Council, the Mayor, and the Parks Commission, Parks Director, for being able to serve in that position, too, and for all the people who helped get people elected and the voters. I want to thank you all. Women think differently than men, and we need women's perspectives and their different leadership styles to help round out government. So I encourage all people to get involved, to serve, volunteer for the city commissions and things, but especially women. Thank you all. It's going to be an honor to serve with you. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank everyone. It's particularly nice to stand here and represent the face of public-private partnerships. You may not know this, but I am a recovering elected official. I escaped in my hometown, where I was president of my school board for a number of years. But now I'm in Federal Way, and now I am one of the people in Federal Way that has the great good fortune to work with our elected officials to make this a sustainable, friendly business climate where we can all live and work. And I am especially happy, really happy, to be standing here with these women and to have this recognition because, you know, 13 million businesses across this country are run by women. They employ more than 10 million people in their businesses. And when 2020 hit and we all faced some hard times, women accounted for 16% of all the entrepreneurial businesses that were started in 2020. Do you know what that means? That means the world's on notice. There is nothing as powerful as a woman who steps up to lead, and you can have all different ways of doing that, whether it's elected, as these women here, thank you very much, everyone, for what they do on a volunteer basis, whether it's someone like me who's employed by the private sector, or whether it's anybody sitting in this room who's volunteering at the farmer's market or at the pack or at the symphony. That's what leadership is, and thank you for letting me represent all of those voices and faces today.
While we're assembling, I want to just say that Laura Belvin on the Lake Haven Board has a master's, two masters, one in civil engineering and another masters in public administration.
Yes. Okay, everybody, now we'll be at a reception for what we say about 15 minutes. We're in recess for that period of time.
Many of the things that are going on here at the city. And I certainly hope if you'd like to view it, it's on my Facebook page, YouTube, in Channel 21, it'll be repeating. I'd like to thank Thomas Fitchner and Dave Jimenez, who did all the video. We did it at various locations throughout the city, as well as Steve McNay and Bill Vodino and, of course, Pam and Kathy in my office. So, really appreciate all the help. We had the City Council Retreat, and I thought we were here in chambers. We had a great discussion, and since it was the council retreat, I will not give a necessarily report on that, other than thank you for including me on that. We appreciate all the work of the council and their great ideas, as well as the contributions of staff and Andrew Ballard. Our facilitator always is entertaining and does a great job bringing us together. And that was recorded and televised as well. Okay, we've got the Chamber Quarterly Update, Wednesday, March 9th. And then we've got St. Patrick's Flag Day raising, flag raising on March 17th, St. Patty's Day. Where's Craig Patrick? Come on up. And that's at 9:00 AM, City Hall. I've asked Craig not to burn his time during his public comment, but as a public service, why don't you tell us what you have in store in just a couple minutes?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council members. What we're going to do is we're going to raise a flag on St. Patrick's Day, Thursday, 17th. That's going to be at 9:00 AM. We are attempting to work with the Diversity Commission. I'm going to try to attend the meeting in March to go over some things. There's going, we're going to have the gold coins this year. We're going to have Neil Hubbard, the bagpipe player. We're working on getting a drum section, and it's going to be about unity this year, and how the different cultures are coming together and working together, supporting one another, how the Irish culture has been in America for, since its foundation, for the most part, the different roles that they played, and how, what we'd like to see in the future of Federal Way. But other than that, really appreciated the City of Federal Way to do this. This is going to be the third year. We started this, the pandemic was coming on. I was really optimistic we'd get through it, and here we are, we're getting through it. We most likely won't be wearing masks, I'm hoping, outside. But I'm looking forward to it. I want to thank the council and the city and the citizens of Federal Way for the support that they have for this event. And this is a free event. This is going to be for kids. There's going to be balloons, gold coins. We're going to have an Irish Invitational Miniature Golf Tournament over in Kent. So, that should be kind of fun. And then we usually go over to the Hart Bar for lunch. But you can come to the event on the 17th, we can talk about it. But I want to thank you all very much, and have a good night. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Craig. Looking forward to the bagpipes. All right. Look forward to it. Okay. Now, that's, oh, now we've got Chief Wong with the Public Safety Update. Chief?
All right. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, Deputy Mayor Honda, members of the council. I'll be providing a public safety report this evening. I've been asked to provide a condensed version of what was presented at the council retreat just a couple days ago. So, I will be presenting just a few slides on crime stats, and then I'll share with you the city police department plan to address crime. I'll spend more time with those topics. Go ahead. What do you want to take off? Thank you. Okay, so for 2021, our overall crime increased 2% from 2020, from 2020, overall crime, increase of 2%. Here's our overall night crime numbers from 2014. From 2016 and the following three years, we had a three-year overall crime reduction. In 2020, we saw 4% crime increase. In 2021, we saw another 2% increase. And you had, you have this information ahead of time, so if you have any questions about the crime numbers, I can certainly answer any of those tonight. And then here's, I took commercial burglary and theft calls here, but overall, where we have most of our crime, you can look at any crime category, occurs on Pack Highway. You can see on this density map that 320th and Pack is where we have most of the crime when we look at all crime total. But this is also our most dense area within our city in terms of the business community, transit activity. So, we have a plan to put additional officers at this particular location moving forward. And you can see down here at the crossings, Costco, Lowe's, Home Depot is another hotspot. So, overall, when you look at our community, neighborhoods, so forth, I would tell you that we don't really have any, too many issues in the neighborhoods. Our challenges are Highway 99, strictly because strict, or the benefit of being strategically located where we're at. Highway 99, I-5, that's what brings all the businesses. We are kind of the, we are the hub for Brown's Point, Unincorporated, King County. People come into Federal Way, and the people coming into Federal Way certainly increasing. You can see that from the sales tax. But this is the busiest area, our Highway 99. That's where all our businesses are concentrated. And then here is for shoplifting. Just looking at shoplifting, again, same location. You have the south end, the crossing area, 21st and Southwest Campus, and then here, Safeway Store at 288, and there's some businesses in that area. So, those are our kind of hotspots in terms of shoplifting. And again, I'll share with you our plan to mitigate that. And then when you really get in, it's really 312th to 324th. This is where we consider our downtown area, 324th to 312th, 11th Avenue South, which is next to Safeway, all the way to I-5. And that's where our concentration in terms of shoplifting occurs in our city. So, our plan for addressing crime. We are partnering with our federal partners, FBI, ATF, DEA. It's not just our agency, but agencies all in South King County. We are sharing data with them. There's ongoing meeting. We are in the process of identifying the prolific individuals in terms of gun violence. Gun violence is the focus here, but other violent crimes. So, maybe drug-related, maybe what angle do we take in terms of holding these individuals accountable? So, I just want to share with you that work is going on. We have our DEA Valley Narcotics Enforcement Team Task Force that's located here in Federal Way. We have a detective sign. And I can tell you that there's ridiculous amount of drug that's coming into Washington, particularly here in King County. They are taking a lot of drugs off the street, and they are saving a lot of lives. But I'll also tell you that's just a drop in the bucket in terms of what we're able to intervene in terms of drugs. In our country, there are more than 100,000 people die from drug overdose. An alarming number in King County continues to grow. So, it's really a problem for us. We're conducting our Special Investigations Unit, Special Operations Unit, we're conducting sting operations. We've done that at our problem locations, had success, taken drug dealers off of our streets. One of the strategic plan that was approved by the council was to add 13 additional officers. We'll put a good use to them, use of those officers, and we'll create a bicycle unit downtown to deal with the crime area that I was mentioning earlier. In the meantime, we're hiring these officers. We're now at, we're down 13 officers. So, we've, if we didn't get the additional 13 officers, we'd have all our positions filled. Now, we're in the, now we are filling the 13 positions. We're working towards that. So, in the meantime, while we're filling these positions, we are using overtime funds, approved by the council, to put additional officers on the street. So, any given day, we're hiring four additional officers plus a couple SOUs. So, six officers are deploying, and it is making a difference. I'm hearing from our officers, and I'm hearing more from our business community and our residents that these officers are more visible, and they're making a positive difference. We've had success at 330th and 336th. We worked it as a, on Pack Highway. We worked it as a problem-oriented policing effort. Because of our success there, we are now, you know, really working all of the highway, the problem areas, and we're working 320th as well. We have 23 square miles in our city, so it's a fairly large area, but we're certainly concentrating there. And I shared with you our POP projects. If you look at our POP projects over the year, Villa Capri, you know, Camelot Mobile Home Park, where we used to have just constant, you know, gun violence. We're not having any issues there because of our effort working with the property management or ownership, and that's what we do. If we have a problem at multifamily housing, we'll work with them. If it's a motel, hotel, we'll work with them. They're known problem areas, we're going to work it as a POP project. We've had much success over the years. Even Westway, I know we have shootings from time to time, but certainly not like what we used to have in the 90s in Westway community. We expand, we've been expanding our Safe City cameras and license plate reader capability in our city. We have 271 cameras. When you look at our multi-sensor cameras, we have more than 460 views. Our officers are using it on a daily basis in real time when we're, whether we're in a foot pursuit or a vehicle looting from us, we can track vehicle, you know, pretty much throughout the city, especially on Pack Highway. So, we have about $100,000 we still need to spend. It's a state grant funding. So, the next set of projects that Director Fitch and I spoke, and we're planning on doing is 320th and Hoyt, we'll get cameras there, Safe City cameras. We're going to go 25th and 320th, 32nd and 320th, 320th and Military, and we're also going to do Enchanted and 360th. So, that'll be our next project. We just got done putting cameras at 273rd and Pack Highway, just right by our city limit. So, we've been growing this for a long time, over the years. We're at a point now that we have other cities contacting us and saying, what is a safe city, and what is it about? They're hearing about it. But it has helped us solve a lot of crimes, and what helps us most is really traffic accidents. There's accidents, and of course, both drivers have the green light. But, boy, we could just go right into our safe camera, see who ran the red light, and we take that and we put it right into our record management system. That's probably what it's used for the most, but it's also helped us solve crimes. So, that's really a success story for us. I want to thank you for our pedestrian interference ordinance. We will not have people setting up tents living on our sidewalks in our streets. That ordinance will address that. We don't have people living out of bus stops like we did a year ago, and this ordinance helps us to enforce it. But we haven't had to arrest anybody, just persuasion. Having that law in place gives officers better footing when we make contact. So, that's a good policy decision for the city. You won't see any visible homeless encampments in our city. We don't allow illegal encampments in our city. And I want to thank our residents, too, because they, you know, really partner with us. We wouldn't be able to do that if we didn't have the support of our residents to do that, and we have the support from the policy group. I also want to mention that we don't just kick people out. We bring in navigators in advance, we work with them. Anybody who wants shelter or housing, our Special Operations Unit with navigators from Salvation Army, Union Gospel Mission, King County, Mobile Behavioral Health Unit, Mental, we bring people in. There's a lot of resource in King County. So, I want to share the policy group. Somebody wants to get off the street because they're a drug addict or they need housing, we will find housing, we will find. But our experience right now is that people who are addicted to drugs, nobody wants help. So, but we're there. We offer help every time we make contact. If somebody wants help, we'll do it. Also, reform law. We're really hopeful that there'll be modification to the 2021 reform laws. Law enforcement had, has had problems with the reform laws, and the Attorney General agreed that it was confusing, and the legislators need to fix it. So, fix some of the laws. And that's what's going on in Olympia. We don't know exactly how it's going to shape out, but we know we're going to get several things that are critical to public safety, but I don't know that we're going to get all that back. So, that'll be some of the challenges. But there's some things going on in Olympia that will be helpful for law enforcement. One of the things that are very decisive in Olympia right now is vehicle pursuits. Nobody wants to be in a pursuit. Most agencies have very restrictive pursuit policy in King County. That's the way it's always been. There's a huge liability. Nobody wants innocent people getting hurt. But what the legislators have created is that in the past, the criminals didn't know if we would chase you or not. And I allowed our officers to pursue early morning hours, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. And when we catch auto thieves, quite often, they have weapons and other things that they were up to no good. So, that was a good way to get violent criminals off the street, and the criminals didn't know if we would chase you or not. So, what's happened now is the criminals know that we can't chase them, a state law, period. So, it's created this lawlessness, public safety issue. We got people running around with ATVs on Pack Highway, and they taunt us. They wait for the police to show up, and they take off, and they know that we can't chase them. So, it's created this lawlessness that in the past, I don't think we would have chased ATVs, you know, in neighborhoods or on streets because it's just too dangerous, the outcome isn't good. But they didn't know that we wouldn't, for sure. But now they know. So, now you have people driving recklessly, drifting at intersections, taking over intersections. When the police show up, they just drive away. We try to stop them, they just elude us. So, it's created this problem. So, the lawmakers need to do something to fix it. I don't know what that fix is now, because I don't think they're going to bring this law back this year. I'm not sure how it's going to play out. And like I told you, we don't allow illegal encampments. I want to assure you that we provide plenty of resource and help. We do not just remove people from homeless. But on the other hand, we've been doing this for a number of years. We don't have large encampments. And right now, in the law enforcement community, these large homeless encampments, they're having stabbing, shootings. We've had those in our encampments, too, but there's huge problems going on, and I think we are ahead of the curve in terms of other communities because we don't have homeless encampments on our streets or large encampments in our neighborhood. When we do find out, our people go to work. We work with code enforcement. We work with social workers, navigators to try to help people. Commons, we have three officers. It's partnership with Malone and Guyver. We have three officers signed to the mall. We've had that for a long time. There's shoplifting going on, but certainly not at the volume of other places. Having officers there, people know, people who shoplift know that's not a place to go. And then holiday times, I want to assure you that we put tremendous number of officers during holiday season to keep our shoppers and our business community safe. And then drugs. I would tell you that right now, this is a huge problem. There is no fix because they're not talking about this in Olympia, but they decriminalize all drugs. So, you got people, they're literally shooting up on Pack Highway. We don't have the volume of problems that some of the other communities do. We don't tolerate it. But bottom line is, you got, you're seeing it, regional news, people are doing drugs. They're doing it on buses, they're doing it on the streets, and the police, there's no one to intervene. And we cannot arrest people for doing drugs on the side of the street because when we contact them, they just walk away. Hey, can I talk to you? No. We have no authority to detain them because they're not committing a crime. And the law clearly says unless you have probable cause right now to arrest someone, you cannot detain someone. Not even reasonable suspicion doesn't play. So, now you got businesses complaining about people doing drugs, people doing on buses, and the law enforcement is saying, hey, you know, the law's very clear. We cannot use force unless we have probable cause for a crime. So, something needs to occur, but I think that's where the influence of the council comes, clearly communicating with King County government and state lawmakers to say, we need a fix. This is not something our citizens want. And drugs, commercial burglary is a problem. People are stealing cars, stealing cars to steal catalytic converters, and quite often, these are drug addicts, and we can't get them off the street because the police can't intervene anymore. And sometimes we would intervene, get them off the street, into the court system, maybe they would get some help. Sometimes I tell you, that's the best thing that ever happened to them. They save their life. But, okay, just telling you, fentanyl overdose, it's a huge problem. What I'm being told by our task force is that there's so much drug coming in, it's so cheap right now. You can get a fentanyl pill for like two bucks. It's supply and demand. We've never seen drugs so cheap historically, and people are dying left and right. So, that's my presentation. That's our plan to address crime. I can answer any questions you might have.
All right. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. Thank you for the report, chief. So, you don't believe that there'll be any help from Olympia in police pursuits and that it's going to stay the way it is currently?
What I'm hearing right, yeah, it's very divisive. They don't want pursuits because it's dangerous. They don't want people getting hurt, and I totally agree with them. I, Federal Way had a very restricted pursuit policy. So, but like I said, what, they want to make the community safer, so in some aspect, yes, you're going to have a lot less police pursuits, but look at the cause and effect of the stolen vehicles. Auto theft is up 50% in the state of Washington. It's up 50% in our community, and I shared with you during the retreat, some people just can't afford to have their car stolen. They only have liability insurance. So, let's say their car costs $10,000, $15,000. They get their car stolen, they got to go buy another car for $10,000, $15,000. They're, they're out $30,000. And most people don't have $30,000 to go buy another car. And people who don't have money only have liability insurance because they don't want to violate the law. So, this is happening over and over, and we can't, we cannot chase. So, there's got to be that balance. The balance is off right now. It clearly is off, and when you have drive-by shootings, commercial burglaries, quite often, they are using stolen cars because they want anonymity, and they know if they're committing a commercial burglary, they're listening to our scanner, hey, the cop's been dispatched. And they, sometimes we've had two burglars, in one week, we had to let go, commercial burglars. We got behind them, and they just sped off, and we cannot chase. And that is really frustrating because we're trying to reduce commercial burglaries, and the crooks know that we can't chase them. In one incident, they're throwing the stolen merchandise out the van on the freeway, heading down the road, and we're waiting for reinforcement to come. We finally turn on our lights, and they speed off, and we let them go. So, it's frustrating. So, there's, the balance is off, in my professional opinion.
So, will there be anything that cities can do if, if the legislature doesn't change this?
No, ma'am. Just like the drug law, remember, we created our own ordinance, and the lawmaker said, no, you're not. We're going to preempt you. You're not enforcing drug law. The legislators made it very clear, they do not want people arrested for doing drugs, even hard drugs like fentanyl. They made it very clear, they made it so difficult for us, they don't want us to make those arrests.
So, I know overdose deaths were up in Federal Way, within the city, the first month of 2022. It seems to me that it's becoming an even bigger public health issue than it was before, and, well, I wish we could get some help from Olympia because it seems like it's going to be the same old thing again.
Well, it was clearly, it was part of our legislative agenda.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
And I also want you to know that I've communicated with lawmakers on these issues. I know the mayor has, and we all have. So, it's not the fact they haven't heard from the Federal Way Policy Group. It's, you know, they're just competing interests, and I'm just telling you, there is no legislation to deal with drugs this year at all, and stolen vehicles is the only one that I don't think we're going to get back.
I have one more question. Do your officers carry the fentanyl testing strips so that they know if they're testing, you know, if they're, if they're detained someone who has some illegal drugs on him, would they know if it's fentanyl or not? Do they have the testing strips?
Yes, we have testing strips. Yes.
Thank you.
I did testify last week before the State House Law and Justice Committee on a Senate bill, I think it was Senate Bill 5619. Since the cutoff now, the Senate bills are in the House, and the House bills are in the Senate. So, I testified last week about, and it was about pursuits. So, there's a, there's a House bill called 2307, and a Senate bill called 5619, and I've testified on both. Council President Kochmar?
I actually think that was in gross Senate Bill 5919, but that's close.
Thank you.
But as far as I understand, there's only two bills on the governor's desk for signature. And the reason this is important is because the legislature ends March 10th, which is next week, and there's not really enough time to have more hearings and discuss these bills. The two bills that are on, with regard to police, that are on the governor's desk for signature, the one is use of non-lethal projectiles, that's one. And then the other is the ability to use force, for example, if it's a mentally ill person. Those are the only two bills I know that actually made it through the legislature this year. So, the problem is, is the pursuit, the ability of our officers to be able to pursue with reasonable suspicion rather than probable cause. So, with probable cause, you have to have the description of the person, reasonable suspicion, you can reasonably think that that's the person to pursue. And so, without the reasonable suspicion, probable cause is such a high level, the criminals are just getting away with a lot of things. So, it's a huge issue. We need more balance in the legislature. But what I would like to ask the mayor is if, after the session is over, if we couldn't have a report from our
Oh, yeah.
our lobbyist in Olympia to what bill's actually passed? And I'm concerned about what might come forward again next year because it depends on what's going to happen in between time, but, you know, if they make it worse or if they make it better, it's just, it's a big concern, but we really need to get a report on what actually happened this year.
Okay. Will do.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions for the chief? All right. Thank you, chief. Thank you. Good job. Okay. Now, we go on to council committee reports, Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety. That's Councilmember Walsh.
In our last meeting, there will be appearing a number of things on our consent agenda today, and our next meeting will be a week from tonight on, on March 8th.
Very good. Thank you very much. Land Use and Transportation, Councilmember Doby.
Yes, our next meeting will be on Monday, the 7th, at 5:00 PM, in person, in the chambers. So, that's, that's where I have to report. We have a couple land use issues that'll be coming up, and should be interesting.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Finance, Economic Development, and Regional Affairs, otherwise known as FedRec. Councilmember Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our committee met on February 22nd, and the committee approved six items that are on the consent agenda, item B through G, for your review and approval. I want to mention, one of the highlights of the meeting was the recommendation or the suggestion from Councilmember Jack Doby and Deputy Mayor Honda in regards to the potential use of investment money to pay for our debt. Currently, our investment options are doing very well, and I want to recognize that. But we were wondering if we can have an analysis done by Finance to see if, instead of putting the money in the investment account, would be more beneficial if we use that money to pay off our debt? So, we are looking forward to the analysis from Director Finance, and we vote from there. The next meeting for our committee is going to be on March 22nd at 5:00 PM, and at this time, I would say we are going to meet in post in City Hall. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Sephardison.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have nothing to report on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Regional Affairs and Deputy Mayor report.
Thank you. So, the upcoming PIC meeting is next Wednesday, the 9th, from 7:00 to 9:00 on Zoom. There'll be a legislative update, an ARPA discussion. We'll be discussing upcoming levies and ballot measures in King County, and an update on the bicycle helmet regulations, which the Board of Health voted to, to stop last, at our last Board of Health meeting, although there are 17 cities in King County that have their own bicycle helmet regulations. And so, what the Board of Health did with that doesn't apply to the cities that have their own regulations. And then on the 9th, also in the afternoon, will be a meeting of the Aircraft Emissions Task Force Meeting, and I have been appointed to that to represent Federal Way and the King County Board of Health. I'd also like to talk a little bit about our retreat. We had a very busy agenda, and I think we got a lot done. So, in the next, probably at the next meeting or the meeting after, we'll be voting on some of the things that we discussed at the retreat, since we can't vote at the retreat. And if any council members want to, you know, to change our, our logo or our vision statement, not our logo, our vision statement, or any of the goals, we should be having a dialogue about that so that we can, you know, can, can change those. And I think we should take those to one of the commission meetings, I mean, committee meetings. So, I'm not sure Linda and I will talk about that and decide what committee meetings that should go to, but should go to, but we should review those. But I think we had a great retreat. I'd like to thank all those who helped make it possible and the council for all their hard work. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Council President, Coach Mark.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So one of the things we discussed at the retreat on last Saturday, February twenty-sixth, was making it easier for people to be able to come for public comment. So we're discussing how to make that easier. So because a lot of you have children at home that you need to get up for school in the morning. So we're addressing how to do that. Some of the highlights from the retreat, as Deputy Mayor Honda said, we talked about our vision, which is attract families and businesses. And some of our goals are to reduce expenditures, which is always a good thing, as well as increase revenue. And then we're going to try to address inflation and economic challenges for businesses and residences. You're all going to have a lot of challenges this year with inflation. And then we want to address drug use, drug use and theft, that's specifically of vehicles. And we want to work with community with regard to organizations for youth. We want to recruit tech businesses because one of our goals is to have this as a tech hub. And we want to complete our broadband study, and we want to help families who are becoming homeless, very concerned about people who may be priced out of their homes because of the increase in home prices and increases in rent. And so some of the things that we're in are kind of like what you'd call a parking lot, things that we want to discuss in the future, deal with GPS locators in vehicles, maybe putting up, starting a fund for our businesses for broken windows, so that people can who have a business and they have a broken window can come and get reimbursed rather than having to use their insurance. And then we want to work with Metro and Sound Transit with regard to security. We're talking about human services funding and reviewing our zoning for our downtown. We're very concerned about how our downtown is going to look and redevelop. And so we want to reach out to developers to talk about what we would like our downtown to look like. For example, we would like to have something like Point Ruston. We've always talked about Kent Station, but but a vision for our downtown. And then we've had some people come talk to us about the public market they would like to have in our downtown. And so a big, big question about how to redevelop our downtown. So that's it for the retreat. And thank you very much, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, now the most important part of the evening, public comment. These, everybody's got is familiar with the rules. So I think we can take a meeting off about reading them. They're clearly on the agenda. I'll go ahead and announce them. And remember, you've got three minutes. When you when the yellow light comes on, that means you've got thirty seconds left. When the red light comes on, please finish your finish your thought. We're not going to stop people mid-sentence, but please don't go any further. Okay, Helen Kubik.
Okay, I'd like to address, according to the minutes in the February sixteenth Planning Commission Agenda Packet, there were two amendments passed. The first one is called Final Platt. Proposal is to have the Community Development Director approve Final Platt instead of City Council approval. Second one's called Platt Alteration. Proposal is to have the Hearing Examiner approve Platt alterations instead of City Council. As it is presented through the Planning Commission documents, the reason for these amendments is that the process is inefficient. And the way to make it more efficient is to take the power of making the final decision as to what ends up getting built in federal way away from our seven elected council members, and give that power to one city employee or one hearing examiner. I agree the process has flaws and is inefficient, but I think it can be fixed in other ways besides taking the power to make the final decision as to what gets built away from our seven elected council members. I think the process could be made more efficient by getting more information in the initial application. For instance, in the case of multi-residential units, there's huge difference between a one-bedroom owner-occupied condo and a four-bedroom rental. There's also a huge difference in impact they make on our community. Not having enough information provided with the initial application leads to hours of comments by council members, commissioners, and the public speculating as to what the applicant intends to build, and hours of questions being asked by council members, commissioners, and the public, to which there is rarely ever an answer beyond we don't know. So getting back to the two amendments I mentioned earlier, are they somewhere here in tonight's agenda? If not, when will they be presented to council and in what form? I would like to see these two proposed amendments be presented as standalone amendments and worded exactly as they are in the Planning Commission meeting minutes. That way, our seven elected council members will fully understand that if they vote yes, they will be giving up their power to make the final decision about what gets built in federal way.
All right.
Thank you.
Brian, could you please respond in writing, and then also not just to the resident, but also to the council as well? All right. Thank you. Jeffrey Tencredi. And then after that, Susan Strong.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, council members. Last May, twenty twenty-one, the government of India was having a real challenge with COVID, the Delta, the Delta virus. So what the government of India did, they decided to do something drastic. So they went to the utter Pradesh region, which is the most populated region of India. The population is about two hundred and forty million. It's the largest state. So what the government did was they contacted the WHO. And so the WHO noted government teams are moving across ninety-seven thousand villages and seventy-five districts over five days in this activity, which began May of twenty twenty-one. The activity involved an aggressive house-to-house test and treatment program with medicine kits. The WHO explained that each monitoring team has two members who who visit homes and villages and remote hamlets to test anyone with symptoms using the rapid antigen kits, rapid antigen test kits. So what happened was, the government of India did not tell anyone what was in the medicine kits. They didn't tell the WHO, they didn't tell the CDC, they didn't tell the media. Well, come like early June, twenty twenty-one, deaths and cases plummeted ninety-seven percent. The following like three weeks, late June, deaths plummeted like ninety-nine percent. So then it just continued. So on August sixth, now, the WHO said also early that they would publish the results. They would compile everything and publish it. But they see, they didn't know what was in the treatment kits. So on August sixth, twenty twenty-one, when COVID was effectively eradicated, like very low, what India did was they lift the media block out. And they told the media, and they told the WHO that in those kits was ivermectin. There was vitamin C, there was vitamin D, there was doxycycline, but it was ivermectin that effectively eradicated COVID in a country of one point three billion. Now, when I got COVID, and I was able to get to a certain kind of a pharmacy, on the paperwork that you get from that pharmacy, it talks about the efficacy of ivermectin, and it references what happened in India. Unfortunately, our country didn't do that. It's very unfortunate what has happened. So many deaths could have been prevented if we had done what India did. Thank you for your time.
All right. Susan Strong, and then Jane Sidlow.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell and City Council. I'm Susan Strong. I was born in Seattle and have been a resident of Federway since nineteen seventy-five. I came here to thank you for the flag ceremony you had on Friday, and I'm glad you just mentioned that. I'm glad to see the Ukrainian flag up there. It's fabulous. How long will it be here in the council?
As long as the fight goes on.
Oh, thank you. I was happy to see that we were sharing our support with the Ukrainians and what they're going through. It was truly a heartwarming event to see the Ukrainian-American community come together with Federway residents to join in prayer, asking for God's protection for the people of Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Sidlow. And then Anna Patrick.
Oh, boy. So I'm going to try to get through this in three minutes. But I'm going to piggyback off of what Helen talked about regarding the final approval for the land rezoning and usage. Because that's also my concern. And I'm not very trusting in that this was even brought up. Is this a move to allow King County to have their way with their housing twelve-twenty bill for traditional housing or permanent supportive housing? So I'm wondering what is behind all this, other than it's not very efficient. I'm, I, yeah, anyway. So and is that the reason for the appointment of the interim city administrator, Brian Davis? I don't know. I don't, I'm not that trusting. I'll just be honest with you. And so in addition to that, it kind of, last week, the developers for the old Bally's met with us for a Zoom meeting. And me and a bunch of my neighbors, we attended that meeting thinking that we might have a chance to dissuade them from purchasing the lot. But we were informed that they were, they fully planned to purchase it, and they had, and that they hadn't determined if it would be apartments or condos. Also, they admitted there needs to be affordable housing in the mix. So what happened with the planning committee stating that they need to have a final plan made as to the use of the lot, or no rezoning would be approved? As it stands, they are, they say that they're still working with the city council as to the rezoning, if that's even true. It is interesting. No one seems to know what's going on, except the developers who are confident it will be rezoned, no matter what they put up there, apartments or condos. During the first meeting last September, many homeowners came forth and stated no apartments, and and most or all did not want rezoning. Once again, no transparency in regard to rezoning that affects our lives, and no traffic study was done to date. And it doesn't seem like the right hand knows what the left hand is doing. That's what I'm getting back and forth when I go to these meetings. It's a very convenient tactic for the government to undermine what the public wants. That's my opinion. Whether you realize it or not, this, this is an offshoot of Agenda Twenty-One, U.N. Agenda Twenty-One. I don't know if most of you have heard of it, but I mean, you should have heard about it. It's been around for decades. And I still have so much more to say. But I guess I'll have to bring it up in another meeting about Agenda Twenty-One. But if you're not informed about Agenda Twenty-One, if you're not informed, I urge you all, you can just go to this website. It's called Agenda Agenda Twenty-One Course dot com. Very simple, one word, AgendaTwentyOneCourse.com. And you will see the agenda, everything that's affecting our community today, everything we're fighting is from that agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane. And Jane, what I'll do is I'll have Mr. Davis get in touch with you as well. And but thank you. All right. And the great thing, Ms. Sidlow, the great thing about our country is that we get to question our elected leaders vigorously. And we see what happens when that's not the case. So thank you so much.
We need to play back.
That's right. Thank you so much. Anna Patrick. And then Trinise Rogers after that.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President, and Council, and public. So this is a shout out for the Eighth Annual March of Diapers on behalf of Cheryl Colhurst, who couldn't be here tonight, and a shout out for Cheryl Colhurst herself. She didn't want me to say that part of it. So I just wanted to let everybody know that March first begins the Eighth Annual March of Diapers. We have seventy businesses in eight different cities collecting diapers. I think we're collecting them right here at City Hall, right?
Yep.
And so last year, March of Diapers collected three hundred and five thousand eight hundred and twenty-six diapers and one hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-four wipes. They're trying to get to five hundred thousand diapers this year. So increasing the goal, hopefully also increasing the wipes. So let's see. You can go to the website, I think there's, I think it's MarchofDiapers dot com. And there's also a Facebook page to find the Google map of drop-off sites. Look for the blue bins when you get to the locations, and that's where your diapers go. I guess that's pretty much it. Thanks to, if you want to volunteer, they need distributors, people that can pick up the diapers, drop off the diapers, count the diapers, and, you know, just check out the website or reach out to Cheryl Colhurst on Facebook. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Trinise Rogers. And then Ken Blevins after that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to first publicly acknowledge Chief Pennington. He is an amazing, I hear a lot of great things about him. I just want to acknowledge his effort in creating a more equitable pathway to becoming a South King County fireman through a newly developed process that offers a much more racial equitable process in recruiting. My brother-in-law, in fact, entered this process, participated in a day, a full day of retreat. And he is now actively involved and engaged in, he's currently in the academy. So I just want to first publicly announce that his efforts did not go in vain. So I'm speaking on behalf of my daughter. She unfortunately was the victim of crime. So victims of crime subsequently theft needs to be easier approach to restoring the harm being done to Federway residents of theft that results in credit card transactions. Council, please consider matching the same effort and energy that you have demonstrated to our retail community in reference to the retail summit that you facilitated a couple months ago. Last Sunday, my baby girl became the victim of a bold disgraceful act of theft. Her electric vehicle was, a window was shattered, and belongings were stolen. While sitting in her place of worship, someone made a fraudulent credit card transaction in Federway. They managed to make and attempt five transactions at five separate locations while she was sitting in her place of worship. After driving her around, I should receive alerts from her bank pleading, pleading, after she, after driving her around, and after receiving alerts from her phone, from her bank, and just receiving information, she had to go around begging and pleading for information and videos of the criminal we came. And so while she was driving around, trying to go from place to place, actually getting these alerts, we came across Officer JJ. I want to just pause first and just give Officer JJ a special recognition of his amazing professionalism and genuine display of humanity. After pleading with the cashier that served the criminal who violated my daughter, the cashier gave a very clear description of the criminal, white, blonde, heavyset female. To add, insert, insult to injury, this woman, this this woman, this disgraceful woman, this criminal made a brazen and shameless act by coming to our home, offering my daughter's identities and cards, saying that she found him in a parking lot. I am disgusted. I'm very angry. My daughter was crying. She used money. They, they, my daughter is a very law-abiding, a beautiful young woman, and she had to cry on her day of worship because she escorted her family in her vehicle on their day to church, and she came to her car with shattered glass. I'm very angry. And so I don't understand, the process is very difficult, very difficult. And we, as a community, you're making efforts to support the retail. There needs to be a pathway for victims of crime, especially fraudulent credit card use. And last, I was really hoping that we would see, mister, I was hoping that we would see, oh, sure.
We're going to add a minute. Can you please add a minute? Just take your time.
Yes, I, it's very hard for my daughters crying. And so that's, that's done. That I want to, I'm done with speaking on that piece. But I just want to make sure we're making an effort. We're not, I'm not hearing anything about the victims. We're not talking about the victims of these crimes. That is a safety issue. This criminal, this brazen criminal came to our home. She didn't know, but she was on video, on our home video. So and lastly, I just want to say, I was expecting to see Mr. John Conan added to our agenda, because I think it's important that we move along in this conversation. And if that conversation is happening behind closed doors, I would really like to hear, I think the public would like to hear update regarding the efforts being made on behalf of Mr. John Conan. Thank you.
Thank you, Trinise. Trinise, I'm going to have the chief or a representative from the police department give you a status update, if not now, then tomorrow. And also, the, what we're going to do, that that issue about the dedication and the renaming is going to go through committee. So that's, that, it wouldn't normally start here. It would probably start with land use, you know, one of those. land use, you know, one of those. So I just want to let you know that.
Thank you for that update. Thank you.
Thank you. But we'll, we'll certainly let you know, and those conversations are not happening behind closed doors.
Okay.
You've got to be at the table.
Mayor, I think you should also say that credit card theft, you can always go to your bank and let them know that your card was stolen, and that way you won't be responsible for the uses, the charges.
All right. Thank you so much, Trinise. All right, Mr. Blevins.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President and Council, thanks for listening to us tonight. I think it's a, just great that we could come out here and exercise our First Amendment rights. And then you guys, as our elected officials, can listen to who voted you in or didn't. So, first of all, what is this? CDC said that we don't need to wear this, we're green zone, why are we following this dictator up in, up in Olympia on something that's just scientifically off the wall? Doesn't make any sense. Let's start making sense, all right? Second of all, I hope that we keep on pushing for the school board to meet here. I talked to one of the school board members, a bunch of them, and most, when, the people that went to the school board this last time, most of them were talking about moving that to here just for it being out in public. Because first of all, when you're, when you're recording it audibly, you can't see what the person's looking like. So someone has a certain look on their face or whatever it is of disgust or that kind of thing, you kind of want to be able to see that, you know, what they're actually mean with what they're saying. So, and having this like this, you just can't see it, and then not seeing your face at all, you can't. So I think it's very important for that to, to happen. And I'm glad that people can go over there and actually speak up as well, using their freedom of speech as well. So I mean, that's just, it's a good thing about federal way that we do do that. But there was, someone were saying, oh, it's going to cost money and so on, I just want to appreciate the mayor and the council, whoever's responsible for this, the City of Federal Way, for actually opening that up and making sure it isn't a money issue for, for people to be here and be seen by the public and be responsible for the children. So the numbers out there for, for our school district is appalling. It's 30, 20% on things that just matter when you, if you want to go to college. And a lot of those, it's not all kids, top 10% are going to college, top 20% might go to college if you have money, top 30% maybe if your family went to college, they're just going to make you go to, to some college. But there's not an opportunity, and they're not picking up the last 10%, they're not picking up the last 20, 30%. And that's just, it's not right. And for them to say in their meetings that they're improving and so on, and since the last superintendent has been there, they've been improving, I'm like, only if you started at zero. Sorry, because any other metric, you'd be fired. It's just not right. So I was planning on saying a few other things, there's a new drug encampment over on, behind the, south of the, south of the mall. We need to just maybe not let off in the winter time and make sure we keep on checking on this stuff, it's a big one. They're just moving. So, and King County's not going to stop bringing people down here. And so I think that's the number one thing, and I hope that we're talking about, I think you guys did, about the carts. It's a really important thing that we make sure that that's taken care of because the beautification of our city, the safety of our city is going to start with something like that. So if we can just pull it a little bit by a little bit, start working on these little things, and helping our police department actually be able to do what they need to do with rules that help them, that would be great. So we're, we'll help as a community. So just know that we'll be here on the positive side and be a help to that, not just like, hey, you guys are doing a bad job. We want to say, hey, what can we do to help our own community as well? Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Ken, just want to let you know, the, first, I have formally made the request of this, of the school district that they have their meetings here, I've communicated that to the superintendent at no charge. Second of all, both the police department and our community development, we're actually in the process of working on that encampment, they're aware of it, and I'll have the chief or deputy chief get back to you about all the efforts that have been made. That actual parcel at 325th and 17th is privately owned, which will be a community development project. So what I'll do is I'll have Brian send you an email as well about our status on that. So we're working on it. Thank you. Okay, now, I don't have any, thank you, everybody. I don't have any other public comments, is there anybody else on the line?
No, I don't have anybody.
All right, thank you, everybody. It's great to hear, everybody. Okay, and now we move on to the consent agenda. These items have been through committee and can be passed all at once. I'll read them and ask if you want, if a council member wants an item pulled for separate consideration. Okay, item A, the minutes for the February 15th, 2022, regular and special meeting minutes. Item B, monthly financial report, December 2021. C, AP vouchers, 116, 2022 through 215, 2022, and payroll vouchers, gosh, do I sound like I'm at an auction? Payroll vouchers, 1122 through 131, 2022. I'll slow down. Request for proposals, City of Federal Way broadband planning study. E, bid acceptance, 21 dash 012, Federal Way Community Center slide replacement and fund project with ARPA allocation. F, purchase of endpoint security software. And G, purchase of snow and ice removal equipment. Council, having read those, would, is there an item you would want pulled for separate consideration? All right, council.
Mayor, I move approval of items A through G on the consent agenda.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
spending a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, passage of A through G.
Aye.
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 Opposed? The matter's passed unanimously, thank you. All right, now we are on to item 6A, monetary retention incentive for city employees. This was continued from February 15th of this year. First, we'll have a staff report from Brian Davis, interim community development director. Excuse me, actually, no, you're the community development director and you're interim city administrator, so.
Yes.
Okay, all right, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, and Council President Coach Mar, Deputy Mayor Honda, and members of the city council. This is a follow-up presentation on discussions that you've had at your last three meetings between your regular council meeting and two of your committee meetings. So I'm not going to get too deep into the why we're discussing this because I think that's been covered. But as I mentioned, you have discussed this at a Parks Committee meeting on January 20th, at your last regular council meeting, and then at the FedRAC meeting last week. And it appears that based on those discussions, that the council has narrowed down the incentive down to four options. And option one is the 2.5% of the base salary. And that, these, this figure up here includes the totals of what it would require the city. Again, for the sake of, for those who have not been in the discussion so far, this is to come out of the ARPA funds that have been given to the city. The, the balance of which, after the approval of the trucks and salt stacker in the slide is around just under 14 million. And the incentive, the retention incentive is to be in two one-time payments, one-time annual payments at the end of 2022 and 2023. So again, the first option is a 2.5 of base salary, and I'll get into why that is the recommendation of the mayor. And then the other three options that the council had talked about was a flat rate at different amounts, and these are the amounts that we heard, and so these are the numbers that we prepared, but we could certainly look at others if you wanted to. But the 2,500 flat rate, the 3,000 flat rate, and the 5,000 flat rate, each of these four options also having an option within itself to have a longevity incentive at five years for, in the amount of $500. I'm going to, when I'm done, I'm going to come back to the slide just so you have it for reference, but I'm going to go through and talk about why the percentage model is the recommendation at this point. And that is the, the intent of why this is brought to you in the first place is to retain some of the employees or the positions that are more difficult to retain, specifically the senior level positions within the city. The example that we came up with, just as an example, is a comparison between custodian and a police lieutenant, police lieutenant being a senior level position. The mid-range salary for that position is, for the base salary is 130. And you can see the breakdown of the flat rate options that you've discussed and what that would translate into a percentage model. And you can see that to really attract the senior level positions like police lieutenant, the 3,000 ranges just below the 2.5% that is, that is proposed. And again, that is the target that we're trying to, to go after for the following reasons. And I've mentioned some of these already, that senior level positions are more difficult to recruit, they're more, they're in a more competitive job market. And so the, just because it is more competitive, it's, it's more difficult to retain these positions. The departure of senior level employees caused the most disruption in city operations, and it's, and that is felt throughout the organization to the most employees. And so there is a, an interest on our part for an operation level to retain those employees so that there's not as much disruption. And then the, the, the training, the orientation, the onboarding of senior level employees is, is complex and can take in some instances up to six months, whereas an entry level can take a matter of days. So the cost of losing a senior employee is significantly greater than losing an entry level employee. And again, for it is, it is for that reason that we are advocating for, or recommending the, the percentage model. Okay, yes, so that is the recommendation, the 2.5% plus the longevity incentive. And that is it. So I'm going to go, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and then just, it won't be on your monitor, but I'll put this back up here, and I believe it'll be on these screens here. And I'll leave this slide up for your reference. Oh, this one.
There we go.
Have any questions?
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you, thank you, Brian, for your presentation. So I have a couple of questions and I have a suggestion. So first of all, how many employees have we had that have been here longer than five years?
Offhand, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
If I can get that to you. The cost that you see here is based on, we've run the numbers of those who have been, who will have been here five years in 2022 and 2023. So that reflects, I think it's 110 for 2022 and a little less than 2023.
Okay.
So the, the tier, I don't have an exact answer to your question, but the, but the dollar amounts in that longevity, longevity incentive reflect the numbers.
Okay. And secondly, it's interesting that in the proposal that the mayor supports that an employee hired after July 1st would not even get a prorated incentive. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, we, we, we need to draw the line somewhere, and so that there was a feeling that after, if we're giving an annual incentive, if you're not here for the majority of the year, then that seems to be backwards for an annual incentive. But the council certainly has the option of changing that.
Because it's actually, to me, it's not an annual incentive, it's an incentive because of what we have been through and the fact that we're losing staff at a pretty high rate. Because this, this won't continue after the two years. I mean, we're not going to have ARPA funds to be able to do this, so, anyway. So I, I would like to recommend that we go with the flat rate of the $5,000. And the reason being, I think that every employee that we have in the City of Federal Way is an important employee. And I feel that in talking with some employees about this, it would be for, just make more sense and make more employees work together better if they were all treated equally. And I, I believe it's important to treat, especially with this, because this is something we've never done before. We may never be able to do it again. And so that is my suggestion. My suggestion also would be that I'm really concerned that we would cut it off on July 1st, and so I'd like to see what other council members think of that. But I, I would like this retention incentive to be prorated for those who are hired during the year also. And I think long-term, as a council, we need to look at strategies that would retain staff. Besides, you know, last time we brought up working a hybrid schedule, which I'm not going to bring that up again tonight, Mayor, but, you know, in the past, we've talked about, we've done a salary study, we know that we need to hire more employees. And at the last budget session, we added some positions because as a council, we felt that that would reduce some of the work for some of the existing employees. And I think we need to understand as a council, is it better to hire more employees, make up positions that we don't currently have, and hire someone to, to take that position? Or is it better in terms of retaining staff, if we pay staff the salary that we should be paying staff? Because we know that with the salary study, we know that there are some employees down here and some, some are up here. And our goal is to try to get those that are down to move up in their salary. So we're going to have to do a lot of discussion and studying to find out what is the best. Is it best to, to keep our current staff and just increase their wages? Or is it best to hire additional staff? I also think that we need to continue to keep their salaries as close as market rate as we can, and to have some kind of a path forward when we're talking about that, especially since this is a budget year. But I would recommend option four. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll go, Council President Coach Mar, then Councilmember Dovey, then Councilmember Sephardson. Council President Coach Mar?
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, and a good suggestion, Deputy Mayor. What I would like to do is just make a motion, and then we can have more discussion. I, by the way, with regard to Deputy Mayor's question regarding longevity incentive for a greater than five years, based on the amount of money included, it looks like it's a 420 employees. So what I'm going to do is make a motion, and then we can discuss, for example, amending the motion to include prorating for individuals hired during the year. But the motion is to adopt option four. I move approval of a flat rate retention of $5,000, which is option four, for all regular full and part-time employees hired before July 1st in the year of the incentive with payouts in December 2022 and December 23, with a $500 longevity bonus for employees with more than five years of employment with the city as of January 1st of the year in question.
All right.
I second that.
There's been a motion in a second. All right. So, and as far as discussion, Councilmember Dovey?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I agree with my colleagues that it's very important that we give incentives and we retain our staff, and we do everything we can to keep our family of employees together. I really, and people may not like this, but I really have a problem with flat rating it, because we're in a budget year, and we can always add it in, you know, six months, three months if we need to go more, but we're spending an additional $1.8 million of ARPA money before we even get into the budget, before we figure out what other things may or may not happen. Many council in the retreat talked about what happens if we have a recession, what happens if our revenues go down. So, I mean, I'm going to support giving people an incentive raise. I think flat rating it at this time is wrong. In my family budget, I got to look at what's happening out, and in my business, I look at what's eight months, what's 12 months, and you can always give more. But when you commit something, if something happens that we don't have planned and we've made the commitment more than the staff has recommended, I think that's derelict. I don't think that's what we're invited to do, but if the council decides they want to do it, I'll support it. But I really believe we need to go with option one, and it gives us more flexibility to be more generous and more, give more later. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sephardson?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation and thank you for your comments. I support option four as well, but to your point, Councilmember Dovey, even if we went with option two, which is flat rate, it's still less than option one at a percentage. But the reason I don't support the percentage is, to me, an incentive is basically to say thank you for your service and for, for, for the, the time that you've been here, for the longevity. So I want to thank everyone equally. I want to, I want to say thank you for the work you've done, thank you for staying with us, thank you for hanging around, thank you for doing the work. So whether you're a senior employee or... So whether you're a senior employee or frontline, you're still doing the work that you're assigned to do and you're still contributing to the welfare of the city, to serving our communities. And so doing a percentage does not make sense. We're not, I don't see it as a salary increase. I just see it as an incentive, as a thank you. So I do support option four and I believe that funds are available if necessary. I did ask that question of our finance director. So if not, I still support flat rate, whatever amount it is that we have. Flat rate is what I would like to go with. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Norton? Oh, I thought, your light came on at some point.
It did?
Yeah.
So, thank you, Mayor Farrell. I do support the flat rate and just one thing to point out is, as time goes by, higher, higher level employees and salaried employees are under contracts and their increases and benefits increase at an exponentially higher rate than lower paid employees and hourly employees. So they're already experiencing benefits that lower paid employees do not receive. I'm a business owner and I understand someone in a managerial position would feel a certain way about someone in a lower position than them receiving the same rate. But I do this for my employees and they're all happy. No one's ever complained about it. My employees that I pay $50 an hour are just as happy to receive the same as the employees that I pay $30 an hour to. And that's actually what I pay my employees. It's a range between 30 to $50 an hour. It just works out for the best in my company and so I do support that. But I'd also like to move to amend the motion to prorate employees hired after July 1st. Can I do that right now?
You can. And I'll, I'll take that as, is there a second to that motion?
I'll stick to that.
All right, there's been a motion and a second to, to prorate, as has previously been discussed. Is there a discussion on the amendment? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the amendment to the main motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Stephanie?
Councilmember Sephardosin?
Aye.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Nay.
Councilmember Dovey?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Aye.
Council President Kochmar?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-2.
Okay. Now as to the main motion. Councilmember Walsh?
I would, for the reasons that, that Councilmember Dovey and, and Director Davis said, I personally think that option one is the best option. However, I will support, I, I certainly think that they should have a, you know, I, I support the idea of, of an incentive bonus. And so I will support the final thing. But I want to be clear that I think the number one for these very things that have been mentioned would be the better choice.
All right, thank you. Council President Kochmar?
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I, I think Councilmember Dovey and Councilmember Walsh had very valid concerns and thank you very much. They're both businessmen. They both understand this very well in their own businesses, as does Councilmember Norton. So for me, my view of this is that this is American Rescue Plan Act money, one-time money that the city received. We received approximately, am I incorrect, 19 million total?
That's correct.
Of that 19 million, 3.6 million have not been identified as to where that money would go. What we wanted to do was say thank you to those employees who worked diligently in the field, did not work at home. They worked in the office or in the field for two years during COVID. We wanted to say this money is directly related to COVID expenses. We wanted to say we appreciate them for what the work that they did. We wanted to say thank you, especially to those who put their lives on the line to protect us during very unreasonable circumstances. And so for me, I just wanted to make sure that we were making sure that our employees knew that we had their back, that they knew that they were valued and appreciated. And so there's no strings attached. This is simply to say thank you for the work previously done. It's not paid all at once. It's paid in an, it's paid in incremental basis over a two-year period. And so thank you very much. And now I'll call for the question. Is there more?
I have a.
Okay.
Thank you. I would just.
Actually, Councilmember Tran, go ahead.
He's up there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Brian, for your presentation. As I stated two weeks ago during the council meeting, I just want to say it one more time for the record. Personally, I, I don't think it is a good idea to use it, ARPA money, to, to pay our employees at, at the retention bonus. That is my position. However, having said that, I would be willing to support my council by giving out the retention bonus under option four. Now, the reason I go with the option four is this. We, we want to send a message to everyone who is working in our city, from the frontline staff to, to the director level. We value them all, right? The management staff, think about this for a minute. Without the frontline staff to support you, you are going to have a really tough time trying to do your business on a daily basis. That's the fact, right? So that is why I would be willing to go with the option four, to give everybody the same amount of money. The second reason why I want to go with option four is I think that option is the most positive impact that could have on the life of people. As I stated two weeks ago, if you're only making $150,000, if we are going to give you five extra thousand dollars, it's not going to make or break your budget. You may be able to, you know, take another vacation, but that's about it. But for the people who make in $50,000 or $55,000 a year, giving them $5,000 extra, it means a lot to those people. It means that they could buy more food for their kids. It means that they could now pay for that medical procedure that they don't have the money to pay for their kids. So I think by giving them that amount of money, it will do the most good for a lot of frontline staff. And that is why I would be in favor of option four. Thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. I would just say if we don't do it now, we, we're not going to be able to do it in six months because the ARPA money will have been voted on and spent because this is coming out of the ARPA money and not out of the general fund. So, thank you.
Okay.
I have one more comment. I, I believe and I support everything that my colleagues have said. Again, I'm going to repeat, our employees are our most important asset. But did anybody from Federal Way get laid off because of COVID? I don't know if they did or didn't, I wasn't here. But I think we have to, we, we represent 103,000 or 106,000 people. And we need to be judicious with the federal money we've got so we can meet all the needs with the people need with a limited amount of money. And again, I believe we can always give more because we got, we have to spend it. We have four years to spend it. It may not be gone as, but taking the approach of all at one time in the very beginning, to me, is not what we're elected to do. Now, I'm, I'm going to vote against the 5,000 because I think it's important that we send the right message that everybody we represent out there is represented fairly, our employees and our citizens who had the same problems. But I'm not voting against it because I don't think we should. I think the, we're sending the wrong amount and the wrong way to disperse it. But I still think we have to do, we need to do it because our employees are our most important asset. But I just want to make sure that's clear.
All right, thank you. Council President Kochmar?
Oh, I just want to say thank you. I, I think you can see that the strength in your council are in the fact that we can discuss a delicate issue and come to a conclusion. Everybody has different opinions and they have valid concerns. And I, I think that, that you can see the strength of this particular council and the fact that we can be, coming from different points of view and being able to discuss and come to a conclusion. And we're not going to be mad at each other when we're done. We're going to be just getting along just fine. It's just that we're trying to do the best we can with, with the tools that we have. Thank you.
Okay. So the, the motion was amended to prorate after July and the, the main motion was in favor of option four, with a flat rate of $5,000. All those in favor of option four?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Stephanie?
Councilmember Sephardosin?
Aye.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dovey?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Aye.
Council President Kochmar?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-1.
All right. Thank you, everybody. All right, good discussion. All right, now we actually, yes?
Mayor, if I could?
Yeah.
First of all, thank you for this. I, I was at a community meeting not too long ago. This was not in Federal Way, it was a community meeting. And I was asked, what, what's your ideal employee look like? And I thought about it for a minute and my, and my answer was a City Federal Way employee. And I've worked with alongside these good people for five years now. I, I know the concerns that they have raised and the action, there was, there was a difference of opinion on, on how to do this, but there was clear unity from, from this council that, that we needed to do this. And I, on behalf of the employees, I really appreciate your, your action tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, um, we actually, we have some children in the audience that are here, I believe, on item 6G. They're with their family. So let's, let's go ahead and move item 6G designation of Rivni as a, Rivni-Ukraine as a sister city. I will have Steve McNair, Intergovernmental Relations and Public Affairs Officer, give a report. And I believe we have a very important guest, Valerie, on, on Zoom as well. Steve?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I have to put this down from the giant over there. Brian's got the microphone high. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This is a pretty special thing. We had a, a guest from, from Rivni and I don't know if the folks at home can see, this is a sister city presentation that Mayor Oleksandr Tretjak gave us last year. It's, it's pretty nice. Rivni's been asking to be a sister city with Federal Way for quite some time. If you come into our sister city room in the mayor's office, there's already a presentation from the City of Rivni. Rivni's a tech hub, which is interesting as Federal Way is moving towards becoming a tech hub. It's a really neat town. When you look at some of the, some of the architecture, it goes all the way back to 930, 930 AD. There's forts in Rivni, 930 AD. The, the City of Rivni is older with their infrastructure than most cities in Russia. Now, we know what's going on in Russia right now and we have the desire, we had been working on this and the acceleration. But as the City of Federal Way has clearly expressed solidarity with Ukraine and with the City of Rivni in particular, as well as the compelling letter Mayor Tretjak sent asking for, using the press and using other ways to raise awareness in Federal Way, excuse me, in, in Ukraine and have his friends back here in Federal Way raise awareness with our large Ukrainian-American population, as well as, as well as the shared values that our two cities have. Mayor Farrell wanted to introduce this tonight. So the resolution says, whereas from time to time, the City of Federal Way recognizes international cities as sister cities. And whereas, the City of Federal Way Council Resolution 95197 outlines selection criteria for determining those cities that are appropriate to be named a sister city of the city. And whereas the City of Rivni-Ukraine and the City of Federal Way, Washington, have established a deep and abiding friendship based on shared cultural values and respect for one another. And whereas the City of Rivni-Ukraine has a proud and long history with a market economy known to be a high-tech industrial base and has expressed an interest to share cultural and business exchanges with the City of Federal Way. And whereas the City of Rivni and the City of Federal Way share important national political interests, national political interests toward the betterment of our people with strong commitment to human rights and the commitment to the continued development between our communities. And whereas the people of the City of Federal Way, Washington, United States of America, stand in solidarity with the people of Rivni-Ukraine against assaults on democracy, unlawful acts of war waged by an aggressive and unstable dictator, and stand for the sovereignty of Ukraine. Now therefore, the City of, Council of the City of Federal Way resolves as follows. One, that the City of Rivni-Ukraine is hereby designated as a sister city of the City of Federal Way, Washington, United States of America. So that's the resolution before you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Mayor's recommendation would be obviously to confirm the recommendation.
Council President Kochmar?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I, I move to adopt the resolution designating Rivni-Ukraine as a sister city to the City of Federal Way.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. So we have other sister cities. Maybe you can tell what they are so the public knows?
Sure.
And then I have another question.
Yes. Hachinohe, Japan is a sister city. That was our first sister city, I believe. And then Donghe, Korea, Republic of Korea, is our second sister city.
Thank you. So what do we do as a sister city? What is our role going to be besides saying that through the resolution that we support them? What, what are we going to do?
Well, what we were hoping to do prior to war breaking out was leading a delegation, both with the Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce, by the way, is a sister chamber to the Chamber and Rivni. We had hoped, and wants pieces on Ukraine, to lead a delegation there and work on cultural and business exchanges between the two, in particular in the tech industry, as Rivni has built itself into a tech hub. The same thing goes with Donghe and with Hachinohe about going back to those cities and continuing our long and rich friendship with those cities, in particular about the modern business interests. With the way the world has adjusted to Zoom calls and the way the world has, has gotten smaller, makes it a lot easier to communicate and to have those kind of exchanges. I would note that it was just a few years ago that we had a visit from one of our sister cities in Korea and we had hoped to go back, but with COVID, obviously, we weren't able to travel.
So is there a cost to having a sister city besides the travel?
No, not for this, there were not.
No.
Beyond, beyond, beyond registration of the sister city network that President Eisenhower set up, we do have a membership in that, but that membership, this doesn't add to it.
Okay. So I, I certainly support this, but I do also support the fact that we have two other sister cities that we have not visited for a number, well, for at least 12 years, probably longer, where they have come here to see us over those 12 years. And I would like to at least start almost like a relationship again with them because I think it's really important, especially if we're going to add a sister city, another sister city. Thank you.
Agreed. Those discussions are ongoing. And Council President Kochmar?
I, I agree, Deputy Mayor. And I think that with Hachinohe and Donghe, it, you know, things are different in Asia and Europe, of course. And those sister city relationships are very important to them, particularly since some of those entities, they revere the United States of America. I've been to Hachinohe, I've been to Donghe, twice. And they, 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 they look at the United States of America as this jewel that they want to go to and that they send their children in college here to visit so they can broaden their experiences. And I think that for us to be able to, some cities in the United States have trophy cases where in the case, and I think we do too, where they put mementos from the different cities. cities. And it's a good cultural exchange. For example, Highline Community College, now Highline University, and the university from Hachinohe had a relationship as well, so they would exchange students. So I think it's a good broadening experience for our citizens, and I think it's beneficial for us to reach out globally as well, to realize that we're not isolated, that we are all part of a worldwide community, and we need to learn from each other. And so I'm very happy that we're adding Rivni-Ukraine as our, I can't tell you, you know, we've all been watching that on television and the courage of those people is just astounding. So anyway, thank you very much, Mayor. I'm glad we're adding them in. And I think if we're going to, Deputy Mayor, if we're going to, we might want to start some kind of a fund. We might even, in the past, we've had sister city associations where people would be a committee and they would meet and they would decide how to fund, being able to go over to those different countries. Thank you.
Very good. We've got Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, you know, I strongly, strongly support this, and I appreciate the fact that the mayor is exhilarating this and doing and presenting this resolution now at this time that is of great significance. I think that everybody in this room strongly supports the people of Ukraine, and the sister city relationship, I think, is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dovi?
Yeah.
And then after that, we've got Councilmember, well, we're just going to go in order, Councilmember Asafadossen and Councilmember Norton.
You know, I support this strongly. I've been fortunate enough over the years to visit Hachinohe twice, Donghe once. The only thing I would encourage the council, let's not just have sister cities because it's fun to have them, let's actually budget so you actually do it. And, you know, even if you have to pay your own way, it's something that's important if we're going to have sister cities. And in the past, it's always been one of those things where, well, maybe we can't afford it. If we're going to have sister cities, let's make it a priority and make it a two-way street.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Asafadossen?
Yeah, thank you, and I do, I totally do support this as well, but I also have some to add. I think now, since we have a sister city in Europe and Asia, I think we should move to Africa, and I'm going to propose Ethiopia right now. So I really do believe it should be, you know, we should go ahead and try something outside of those two continents and move to another continent. Thank you.
Thank you. Point well taken. And Councilmember Norton, did you have something or you just left?
No, my light was on.
Oh, very good. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would note that we have a former council member from Rivni here with us who, as we learned last night at our candlelight vigil, was visiting friends in the United States and is not able to go home, but was able to send a text message to Mayor Tretjak yesterday, showing him the flag outside that we did, and we'll be doing a large press junket when this is over.
Would he like to address the council?
Yes, sir.
In the community? Do we have a translator? I think, yeah, Ukrainian may be a bit...
I'm here to represent on their influential life.
Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having us here. Thank you so much for doing what you're doing for us and for meeting with us tomorrow, yesterday, to honor those brave soldiers and civilian people, innocent civilian people who were killed in this brutal war. I am here to represent our honorary counsel of Ukraine in Seattle, and I will gladly interpret for you.
Is there another microphone that I can use?
Da, da. Z historiyo mi znaemo shov se pochnalo se z Kyivskoj Rusi.
From history, we know that everything started with Kiev, Russia.
P'sladz'ogo bula Moskovye, te shostalo centrom zaraz Rosii.
After that, it was Moscow, which began, which became the center of Ukraine, of Russia.
Iv si ti narode vany bole slovianskimi i bole nazivalisa braterskimi. Narode Rosii, B'larusii, Ukraini.
So the nationalities of Russia, Belarus, and Ukraine were kind of like country, sister countries.
Ale na jaly ti who nazivalisa sestrami sегодny je vorogami.
But unfortunately, those who call themselves sisters today are enemies.
Ye taka mudrizh' yaka gvoorit shodaleki druh za vashkogo chasu vin moze buite kraschem za twogobrata. Chi sestri?
And there is belief in Ukraine, or saying in Ukraine, that sometimes a friend who is far away from you can be better than your own sister or brother, your sibling.
Kozhna ludina vana pragni druga, brata, sestri.
Every person wants to have a friend, brother, or sister.
Dobryh vzayemnichy vidosin.
And kind, connected relationships.
Na jaly nasha sestra stala vorogom, tomu mi duche radii za te shomozemo rozvivati ci vidosini z vami.
Unfortunately, our sister became our enemy, and we are happy that we have, we can develop this relationship with you.
Duche bagato krajin vany zaraz vyslovili p'trimku dla Ukraini. Sегодny Biden sказav shov narod Ukraini i zelenskii vany jakbe zachopliyutsya vesvietnim. Biden sказav. Biden sказav shov, no, vesviet zachopliyutsya zelenskimi Ukraino.
Today Biden said that the entire world is in awe of our president.
I v'idi mesta, v'idi meni mista rivnogo, v'idi meni deputat'iv, ya duche vam d'akoyu shovy maksimalno shvitu p'episuyte ciu rezoluzyiu pro nashi vzayemni vidosini.
And on behalf of the city Rivni, we are very grateful, I'm very grateful to you that you are foregoing the process and you are signing this resolution tonight.
U nas naspravdi velika bida, ya k'vi bachite, i mi naspravdi potrebuemo dopomogu.
As you can see, we really need help, and what is happening in our country is horrifying.
Nasprav, spochatku slovom, ale takosh i dilom, ch'im vi zmojete?
So we appreciate that you support us verbally, but also by taking actions.
Oleksandr Tretjak, mer nasho mista, mi je tovarish'yi.
Oleksandr Tretjak is a mayor of our city, and we are friends.
Ya perchitovav yogo v'rajen'ya v'ito'v, yak vyn buv Federway.
And I read about his impression about Federway.
Vyn naspravdi zachopliyuvatsya yak merom, tak' i deputat'ami.
He admired the mayor and the councils.
Ya domo vyn bez radist'yu buv be tu'ut i rozd'ili'v be z vami ci svato.
I'm sure he would be happy to be here and share this celebration with you.
Ale na jaly vyn zaraz v'ri'esh'ye vsi spravy v'mist'ye.
But unfortunately, he has to deal with all the things that are happening in Rivni.
Ya vy'evitsya tu'ut v'ipadkovo, bo mi priehal'lu v'vipustku tri tijn'ny to mu.
I just happened to be here because we were here on vacation. We came here three weeks ago.
I duche rad'ye znayomst'vo z vami, d'akoyu.
I'm very happy to meet you. Thank you.
Well, we're happy to meet you. We stand in solidarity with you, and today, we're all Ukrainians. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. We really appreciate your support and the support that the country has, your country has shown to us. It means a lot to us. It's really hard seeing our kids, our brothers, our sisters, are being so mercilessly killed in this senseless war. We really hope that it will end soon, and it is unfortunate that it is not the war, we believe that it is not the war between Ukraine and Russia, it is the war between Ukraine and Mr. Putin. Thank you very much for your support again. Thank you for having us here, and we are happy that Rivni now is becoming the sister of Federway. Thank you very much.
I know, correct, correct. Okay, there's been a motion, discussion?
Mayor, we have Valerie as well.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, council president, council members, thank you so much for making Rivni a sister city of Federway. That means that you believe in the same things that we believe. You believe together with us that Ukraine will prevail. You believe that Ukraine will stand, and you believe that there will be prosperity in Rivni, and we will be able to enrich each other. Together, we can partner. Together, we can do projects. And today's sister city memorandums that will be voted for will be very, very big encouragement for people of Ukraine and people of Rivni. We may think that it is not maybe the best time to do it, but what better time can be when people are fighting and when people need to feel that others believe in their victory. Russia lost this war. People of Russia lost this war, and we know that price that we are paying is high, but there is a price for democracy, there is a price for freedom, and we appreciate support of United States and support of local governments for people of Ukraine and for Ukrainian community. I remember how this dialogue started and how I introduced both mayors and how we had first Zoom call, and I'm sure that Mayor Tretjak would love to join this Zoom call, and he would join this Zoom call if he didn't have to deal with war that Russia started against Ukraine. So thank you so much again, and God bless America and God bless Ukraine.
Thank you, Valerie. All right, there's been a motion, there's been a second, there's been discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? It's official and unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, you know, it might be interesting if we had a report on how many Ukrainians there are. It's not in the census, right? There's no way I can find out how many Ukrainian-American citizens there are in the city. It'd be interesting. I know we have more than three churches.
Right.
That are Ukrainian, possibly up to five, but...
We'll try to find that out.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Bill, let's work on that tomorrow. Okay? Okay, now, we took some matters out of order. We're on to item B, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Appointments.
I move to appoint Mike Dunwoodie as a voting member of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee with a term to expire October 31, 2023.
Second.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I do. I'd like to thank Mike for all the things he has done for our city. He has been running the Warehouser Aquatic, King County Aquatic Center since it started, since it opened, which was, what, 20-some years ago?
Thirty, thirty-three years ago.
Thirty. And he's just amazing. He promotes Federway wherever he can, and he's brought a lot of people here to the city. So he's done an amazing job, and thank, thank Mike for staying on the Lodging Tax Committee.
Here, here. All right.
I totally second what Deputy Mayor said, and earlier during the appointment, I did say he's not allowed to retire, so I'm gonna...
Hold him to that.
Hold him to that.
Actually, I think it was 32 years ago because it was the summer of 1990 when the Goodwill Games were. I remember because I had a Goodwill Game sweatshirt at the time at the, just finished University of Washington.
You still have it?
I, you know, I don't.
No.
Yeah, I know, could you imagine? Okay, there's been a motion, second, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, matter passed unanimously. Congratulations, Mike, and thank you. Item C, Arts Commission Appointment, Councilmember Walsh.
I move to make the following appointments to the Arts Commission. James Morgesi as a voting member with a term to expire December 31, 2023, and Jan Barber as a voting member with a term to expire December 31, 2024.
All right, there's a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you to our new commissioners. Okay, item D, Senior Advisory Commission Appointments, Deputy Mayor Honda?
I move to appoint Tammy Zeack as an alternate member of the Senior Advisory Commission with a term to expire August 31, 2024.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, a matter passed unanimously. Thank you, Tammy. Item E, Youth Commission Appointment, Councilmember Walsh.
I move to appoint Brian Aguilar Campos as a voting member of the Youth Commission with a term to expire August 31, 2023.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passed unanimously. Congratulations, Brian. All right, Steel Lake Management District Committee Appointments, Councilmember Dovi?
Yes, I move to appoint Mark Sable, Margaret Reinhardt, Tom DeZutter, and Jeremy Benson as voting members with terms to expire December 31, 2023.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second with regard to the four proposed commissioners. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matters pass, the appointments pass unanimously. Moving on to item seven, this is a second reading of ordinances and enactment. Item A, Ordinance Bill 812, Amending Title 19 of the Federway Revised Code Regarding Public Transportation Facilities. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Ordinance Council Bill 812, Amending Title 19 of the Federway Revised Code Regarding Public Transportation Facilities, An Ordinance of the City of Federway, Washington, Relating to Public Transportation Facilities, Amending Federway Revised Code 1905120, 1905200, and 19105020, and Adding New Sections to Chapters 19225 and 19240, Federway Revised Code.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dovi, do you have a motion?
I move to approve the proposed ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Thank you. Now we're on to council reports. It's the first meeting of the month, so Councilmember Asafadossen?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report on, so thank you so much. It was a great meeting, and see you at the next meeting.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Norton?
Actually, we won't be here at the next meeting.
No. We will be on Zoom.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mike Ferens. He sent an email to the council about the garbage situation in Federway, and so we went out and picked up garbage at a middle school on Sunday, I believe, and there've been some other, other people in the city who've helped, like Cheryl Hurst and Bob Drake, Lamont Stiles. We went out a couple, about a month or two ago, and we all picked up garbage on Pack Highway, and I know this is not a council thing, I'm just saying if you're interested in getting together... in getting together with me and Mike, we're gonna start just going around and picking up garbage every couple of weeks. So, that's all. I just, it's just maybe two hours, not asking for a lot of time. It's just something that I've kind of been doing, and it, it really doesn't take long to do, to have a huge effect on a really big piece of property. We did Sokolovia Middle School. We got all the way around the front and the track and the little trail behind there. It only took us two hours. So, anyway, that's it. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Councilmember. All right. Councilmember Walsh? Actually, hold on, sorry. Councilmember Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything else to report.
All right. We didn't forget about you, buddy. All right. Councilmember Walsh?
All right. I would just like to ask everybody to save the date for April 23rd. That will be the annual Parks Appreciation Day, and it's a tradition that's been going on for nearly 20 years here in Federal Way, and between 9:00 and noon on that day, we will, we, I invite you to join hundreds of your neighbors out in the parks to clean up, beautify. We have some beautiful, beautiful parks here in Federal Way. Our Parks Department does a great job. However, beautifying them as they should be takes more than just what they can do. It takes the help of all of us as residents, citizens of Federal Way. I encourage you to come out, and more information on that shall be forthcoming.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Doby?
I don't have anything to report, but I would like to comment on Councilmember Norton and Councilmembers Walsh's comments. You know, this is a great time for people to step up and take a bag and pick up garbage. I received the same email, and I applaud Councilmember Norton for getting out there and picking up garbage. And I think, if you think back in the early days, we had a council member and a mayor, Skip Priest, and he used to go out every day with his walker and pick up garbage, and he still does it in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. He won the award for the most garbage picked up by anybody in Coeur d'Alene. But I think it's a great advocacy, and it's a great thing for citizens to get concerned about what it looks like, and maybe we should have Pick Up Garbage Days or bounties for fundraisers for groups to clean up our city.
All right. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the donations that we were, this Federal Way Sorprenders Club was able to collect, along with the King, South King Tool Library for the Federal Way Senior Center. I would suggest, if you have the ability to donate food to the Federal Way Senior Center, to continue to do that, as they have a constant need for food donations, and I'd like to encourage people to support the diaper drive, which is going on from now until the end of the month. And just so that you can all plan your summer, the Fourth Friday in July, the Kwanis is bringing back the salmon, well, we, bringing back a salmon bake in live and in person. The last two summers, we have had a drive-through salmon bake, which has been very successful, but we are bringing it back in person. It will be, I think, the 66th or 67th year, one of the, one of the longest-running events here in Federal Way. So, that is always the Fourth Friday in July at Steel Lake Park, and we keep our ticket prices low, about $25, so that as many community members can come as can be. So, we're looking forward to it, and it never rains on this day. Four years ago, it rained during the daytime. I was co-chairman of it that year, and at 4:00, when the salmon bake started, it stopped, and the sun came out. So, it was awesome. Thank you.
Very good. Council President Kuchmar?
Thank you. So, and again, thank you, Councilmember Norton, for garbage removal. Thank you. And for the Parks Cleanup Day reminder, Councilmember Walsh, thank you. So, when you're out there, to our citizens, you might just look around your own property and see, you know, we have a lot of flooding that's been going on, and it's always a good thing to, you have ditches in front of your homes. Sometimes those ditches need to be cleaned out so that the water isn't running across the road, and that's always a big concern, especially if it turns cold and icy. That water on the road can be deadly for some folks. So, clean out your areas around the storm drains and the ditches. Ivy kind of seems to grow everywhere. One other thing, though, if you're going to donate to the Ukraine, to the Ukrainian community, one, be careful of scams, and one way you can donate is to go on the World Vision website. World Vision is right in Fedor Way, they're a recognized charity, and that money will definitely go to the Ukrainian community. Some of you have been watching to see whether we are going to, the council, per se, is going to be meeting with the school board directors, and we are in the middle of those discussions, and Councilmember, I mean, Deputy Mayor Honda and I did meet with the school board president, Mr. Ito, and we're, they're discussing whether or not we're going to meet perhaps on a yearly basis, or maybe more than a yearly basis. And finally, the Multiservice Center, which is the agency in our community that feeds the hungry, is going to have a crab feed, a yearly crab feed, and this year is going to be a person, but March 15th is when those tickets will go on sale online. So, just look for March 15th for the Multiservice Center crab feed tickets. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.